Yeah, I coached all the little links.
Daniel, you're up.
All right, let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting May 3rd, 2018. I'm not even turned on. Here we go. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting May 2013, May 3rd, 2018 to order. And we'll start that. Mr. Slay, good to see you. Thanks for coming with invocation, please.
I thank you for another opportunity that we have to come before you, before we begin. I like your presence here with us, Lord, and thank you for the blessings that you've given to us. Thank you for the sacrifices that have been made by all those who serve our community, Lord, so that we can have the life that we have here. I thank you for these men and for their willingness to serve their community. I pray, Father, you'll bless them this morning with wisdom and discernment that they need. Thank you, Lord, for the folks that protect us and take good care of us. And I praise you for them, and I ask you to bless them and protect them. Christ has been.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Slay. I'm gonna move one thing around for the last time on the agenda. Instead of going into the planning commission meeting, I want to start the supervisors' meeting and jump down to the election of officers under item number five. Entertain a motion to make Bob Morrow president of Rankin County Board of Supervisors with Steve Gaines, Vice President.
You made that motion?
I'm making that as a motion.
I'll say it.
The motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. So, Mr. President, we'll move back into the planning session meeting and turn it over to you.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you, Daniel. I want to thank you for your services the last couple of months. I was a little hesitant when a farmer was gonna start chairing these meetings for the last eight months. I was a little nervous, but you did an outstanding job. You raised the bar up there and got us moving and get us out, and that's my plan as well. We'll go ahead and call an order of the planning commission meeting for May 3rd, as soon as I can find my... All right. Consideration and approval for March 29th minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Any old business?
There is no old business.
No old business. Moving on to number four, new considerations. Ms. Renee?
Thank you. The first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Rav Betty. This property is on the corner of Highway 468 and 469. That's the southeast corner. It's a 7.30 acre parcel that's Zone C2. He's seeking the conditional use permit to construct a convenience store. That's an aerial view of that property. This is his site plan. You can see the placement of the store here. This site plan actually has some future buildings shown, but they're not being... They're not part of this conditional use. That would be future. The gas station's gonna face 468. This is the floor plan. They do have two rental spaces. One will be a Pizza Hut, and the other's undetermined at this time. The total square footage of that building is 7,200 square feet. All right, these are the elevations of that building. The building facade will be split-faced block, ephes and brick. And these are color renderings of the building. Mr. Betty is here if y'all have any questions for him.
That's good.
Questions? I make a motion, we set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. D, Ms. Renee?
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Georgia Oliver at 132 Evergreen Cove. Evergreen Cove is off of Trickenbridge Road, and this property is at the very end. She's seeking the conditional use permit to replace an existing manufactured home with a 2018 single-wide home. It's a 17.55 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view. There is an old mobile home on the property here that she's living in now, and she's gonna take that one out and wants to bring a new one in. That's her site plan. You can see the old one, and she's proposing to place the new one in that area there. These are... This is a view of that property with that existing mobile home. I can't even... Yeah, it's right there. And these are surrounding properties. It appears that all that back in there is family land. And she's seeking that the conditional use under the emergency or hardship, she needs to be close to her relatives so they can help care for her.
I make a motion. We said it. And then the next one, I want to make sure they remove the old one, too. I mean, I know she's saying that. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. C, Ms. Renee?
All right, is a conditional use permit for Brian Van Landingham at 320 Wild Rose Lane. This property is located on the south side of Wild Rose Lane. It is a 3.30 acre parcel zoned RE1. He's seeking the conditional use permit to construct a second dwelling for his elderly parents. It will be attached to an existing shop behind his home. That's an aerial view. You can see his existing home there on the property. That's a view of the shop that he wants to attach the residence to. And there's his house with the shop. He did get signatures from two adjoining property owners, and they are not opposed to his proposed project. And these are surrounding properties in that neighborhood. They're here if you have any questions.
Questions?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Allen, is that gonna be behind the shop?
No, it's gonna... I'm gonna convert the shop into what looks like a garage, brick garage on the front of the facial of it. And the house would be to the right of that right there, and it'll have the same columns and look like the front of the house is probably on the property.
There. If I remember, there's some drainage at some point that comes behind those houses. It's gonna be on one side or the other, that drainage.
It's gonna be on the front side, the forward side of that drainage. It'd be in the back of the house. It's probably end up being about six feet from the back of the house to where that little creek goes from back there.
And you...
It actually goes about six feet beyond the back of the shop right now, toward the back of the house, would end up being...
Are you worried about it getting flooded?
Well, I mean, I'd say if it stay within the creek, you won't, but I'm sure he knows. As long as he knows where that creek is, he knows it probably better than I do. What about the Health Department? Would they stand off?
Until we get your approval, we not apply for...
Okay. Well, I say you said it. Second.
There's been a motion to set the public hearing. Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Renee, D. And I failed to mention earlier, or Daniel and I both did, Jared is running behind unexpected problem, so may get here, may not, but go ahead.
All right, um, next is a conditional use permit for Pierce Construction at 115 Mangum Drive. This property is located on the west side of Highway 49. It's a 105 acre parcel zoned A1. They're seeking the conditional use permit to surface mine four acres of this 105 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of that property. All of the dirt here is gonna be solely used for the Highway 49 construction project. They do have their mining notice of intent filed with DEQ. This is the entrance to the mine. And this is out on Mangum Drive where they're coming in and out. And all of this area shown here is under state maintenance. And here as well. This is the only surrounding properties really there.
Entertain a motion, set it.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jared sent through an email form. If he didn't make it, he wanted to go ahead and set the public hearing, so I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. D, Ms. Renee?
All right, this last item has been withdrawn for now, so that is all on the planning meeting.
Okay.
Other than...
Ma'am?
Uh, this last item's been withdrawn.
Okay. All right. Any other new considerations? If not, we'll move on to architectural review. Anything under architectural review?
No, sir.
All right. Nuisance properties, number A.
Item A under nuisance properties is the Michael Antonescu nuisance property, 906 Caitlin Cove. It's a District Four. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos.
All right, these pictures were taken 9/27 of last year of this truck that's been parked in the street. It's been there for a good, long while. We've got numerous complaints. Didn't get any response, never removed it. We didn't get any new pictures, but the truck is gone today. Once they got the hearing notice, I think within the last few days, they did move the truck, the vehicle.
So, this is Reservoir East. It's within... It's also included within the Reservoir Community District, and we don't allow home street parking in the RCD.
It's... That's not... That's not in the RCD.
Oh, it's not in the RCD? Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
But they still can't park. It doesn't run. It's inoperable.
I got you. There you go. So, the nuisance is inoperable. All right.
So, apparently, it's been drugged somewhere. What we would propose with your blessing is to go ahead and declare that particular truck with that particular license number to be a nuisance in that section, so that if it shows back up, we can deal with it as a nuisance consideration without having to bring it back before you again.
I'll make that motion, just as you put it. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B, Ms. Renee?
Oh, that's me, Robert in Beverly Lane.
I'm sorry.
106 Woodlands Park Drive. I'm only one and a half cups deep through coffee so far this morning, so you're gonna have to let it kick in for me here. Bear with me. 106 Woodland Park Drive, that's in District Two. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, these pictures were taken January 8th of 2018. There's a lot of vehicles there. We got complaints about vehicles with no tags. This has been an ongoing complaint. I believe that finally, Dwayne did hear from the property owner, and I'll just let him tell you what was said.
Yeah, he's going to the people that are renting this house. They're going to be evicted at the end of this month. He asked that if we would bear with him till the end of the month, they get all of this taken care of.
So, what I would propose that we do on this one is go ahead and declare the nuisance and ask Renee and Dwayne to stall any continuing action on it until such time as the landlord has had a chance to address the problem.
So, same situation. You wouldn't have to bring it back as a nuisance.
That's correct.
You could just deal with it immediately.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Cross.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Slay?
Yes, thank you. Item C is the Jenny McElhenney and Austin Pickering Nuisance Properties, 376 Andrew Chapel Roads, District Four. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask for an aide to demonstrate.
All right, we've received numerous complaints here. These pictures were taken January 26th, showing the condition of the property. We have had a few calls, but the number... The phone numbers that they leave, we can't ever get back in touch with them. These are the new pictures that were taken May the 1st. So, it's actually gotten worse, not better.
Is anyone here on behalf of the McElhenney-Pickering matter? Anyone?
I don't... I didn't think I was gonna see anyone on that. I think at this point, guys, it's just declare the nuisance, and we'll let Justice Court see what they can do with this.
I think you're right. If it's where I think it is, we'll have many meetings full of... I mean, there's a bunch of homes that are in same condition as this. Am I right, Renee?
It's on Andrew Chapel Road now, going out to 80 there. There's some nice homes out there.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You talking about going out to 80 on the other end?
On the other end of Andrew Chapel.
Okay. All right, we got on the other...
Yeah, going out Baker Lane the other way.
We have quite a few, too. But, yeah, we need to say it.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, sir, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess until May 31st.
Make that motion.
Mr. Cross makes the motion, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll move back into the Board of Supervisors meeting and move on into public comments. At this time, we're going to have a proclamation. I had the opportunity of being contacted by one of my constituents, a gentleman I used to work with when I was the City of Brandon, Andy Stogner, asked me if I would be willing to declare the month of May neurofibromatosis. Am I getting that right? We gonna call it... We're gonna go ahead and do the acronym NF, Awareness Month, this May. And of course, I've kept up with a little bit on Andy and Brooke's travels and the Facebook page, and of course, we'll go out here as a board to recognize this and appreciate what you guys are trying to do for the community and let people know what's going on. And Mr. Slay here has something he'd like to say.
Absolutely. We have an official proclamation that is declaring May 2018 as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. And I'm gonna refer to it as NF from now on, so that that full mouthful of word doesn't trip us up this morning. Whereas, May 17, 2018 is NF Awareness Day, that is designed to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder. And whereas, although over 2 million people around the world are living with NF, and one in every 3,000 births is diagnosed with NF, it is still a relatively unknown to the public. Whereas NF affects all populations equally, regardless of race, ethnicity or gender. Whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, and also can affect development of the brain, cardiovascular systems, bones and skin. And whereas, the disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain and cancer. And whereas, work remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. Now, therefore, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors desires to promote public awareness of NF by proclaiming May 2018 as Neurofibromatosis Month in Rankin County. And that's signed as of the 3rd day of May 2018, and we have an official proclamation to that effect, Mr. President. So, I'm grateful for the board for recognizing this rare disorder and helping to get the word out about it, so that research efforts can be magnified.
We appreciate it, Mr. Slay. Andy, you have a comment you wanted to make for the board?
Just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank y'all for being willing to do the proclamation, Bob, bringing it forward and doing this for us to bring awareness to it and the impact it has on my family's life. I really appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure. Glad to help.
Brooke's teacher is with us today. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
I'm picking on the spot. I love this job. It's very special, and I'm just happy for her today.
Great. All right, do you mind if you and Brooke come on up and picture too? Y'all come on up. Chuck, you wanna grab them?
Come on, guys. Jared's gonna hate this. We'll put y'all in the center.
Chuck, can we leave a little space for you to Photoshop Jared in?
Absolutely. But great, it's great to have him. Exactly. Thank you, I declare the charge of this service. Let's get this... Okay, guys, here we go. One, two, three. All right. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Bob. Thanks, sir. All right. Yes, sir. Bye. Nice meeting you today. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else under public comments? Anybody else?
Mr. Janice.
Then we'll move on. Mr. Slay, it looks like it's your turn, back to number A.
I might get a little bit of help on this one. My road manager, we're gonna... We wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about our issue with some school bus turnarounds. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Steve, I think... I'm gonna put you on the spot, Steve. Yeah. What occurred recently was some confusion over the manner in which school bus turnarounds appear before us as a Board of Supervisors officially from the school district. Just to put it on the table, so that it's clear for everyone, school bus turnarounds originate or birthed by the school district. They are designed for the purpose of access by way of the school bus to kids who are attending public school. And the way the system is supposed to work, the school identifies the kids who... Whose residences are on roads that are not public roads, but the school bus is not able to... Because of the condition of the road in which they live, being a private road, the school bus is not able to access any sort of closely attenuated bus stop. In other words, the state law requires that a school bus get to a point within proximity of a kid's residence in order to pick them up and drop them off. And so, in order to accommodate that, it is often required that some work be done to maintain a private road that is being accessed for the purpose of picking up kids for school. So, we rely on the school to tell us what are the roads that need to be considered school bus turnarounds. They deliver to us at least annually a listing of official school bus turnarounds. What we have discovered over time is that there are roads that we are working in school bus turnarounds that will appear on the list, and then they will disappear. That's not unusual. If you have kids that graduate from school and no longer are attending school, then it... There may be a particular road for which there is no use as a school bus access. So, it's not unusual for school bus turnaround road, designated roads, to come on or off given lists that we give from the school district. The problem, though, is that at least on one or more occasions, what we've discovered is that there are definitely kids on a given road, but the road has disappeared off the school bus turnaround list. And there's not any explanation as to why. It would be fine, I think, it wouldn't be fine, but it would be better if the constituents who are utilizing that service understood that it's the school district that controls that process. Unfortunately, especially for Mr. Gaines' case, the assumption being made is that it's the county's problem not working a school bus turnaround anymore. That's us. We somehow are responsible for it either being on or off the list, which is not the case. So, we've... That's the background for everybody to understand. Mike and I talked about it. We've had at least one conversation with the school district, and we've got some ideas on how we want to sort of formalize the process, to make it more clear for everyone how a particular road is gonna be handled as it relates to school bus turnaround. Mike, you want to join me on this? I'm gonna let Mike tell you a little bit about his conversation. I was not a party to, but his conversation with the school district folks, and then we'll go from there about a proposed policy.
What we've looked at is basically kind of working it a couple times a year, and I might be gonna get into policy here in a little bit.
Yep, that's fine.
We looked at going in, we had a meeting the other day with Shane and Randy Welsby, and we was getting mixed emotions. Some of them was coming in and just worked the turnaround. Some of them would say worked the turnaround in the road, you know? And according to the conversation I was getting, if they sent it to work the turnaround and we worked the road, we just kinda on our own doing that. So, that's why we had that meeting the other day. And so, what we've kind of come up with, and which we gotta get back with Shane and some of them, but what we looked at doing is once they get their school bus turnaround list done, then, and approved, we go in there and just work every school bus turnaround it is. And that's probably gonna take us a couple months to get through the county to do, because I'll just let my greater guy come through. As he comes through, he'll have that list, he'll check it off, he'll date it, do all that kind of stuff as he goes through. And if we need to add a little bit of gravel, that's fine. And then come, I think we talked about March, somewhere about March, they would give us another approved turnaround list. That way, if something comes online, it'll be done, and then we'll start back over, and we should have them all worked by the time the school gets out. That was one suggestion I had in the matters. And what they talked about doing was Shane even said that if a kid was riding the bus, that they would send a letter home, get the parents to sign it. We'd put some language in there about, you know, if we tear up a telephone line, water line, you know, that we're not responsible for this kind of, you know, damage or different things like that.
Well, Mike, expand a little. We're... It's not just if we tear it up. These are private drives, and a lot of times their phone...
That's right.
Their telephone runs down the road.
Down the middle of the road.
Or their water line runs down the middle of the road.
Yeah. I mean, we busted one the other day just driving in the road, you know? I mean, it's in the road. And we've been having to stop and, you know, go out there and repair it, do what we gotta do to try to get it done. And, you know, it's kind of all been on us to take care of all this.
What was the answer to what we got a month or two ago that when they sent us something that may only... Or it probably was just gonna be for us to work the cul-de-sac itself? And you and I discussed it and said, well, if we're going in there and we see that the road's deteriorated to the point it busts, it's not safe.
Right.
We're not gonna just work that cul-de-sac.
Or work the road.
We're not... We'll do nothing, or we'll do to where it's safe, because it'd be... Then again, they're gonna look at us and say, what a bunch of dummies. They come in here and left those ruts where the school bus has come in and out and got to the end. What did they say about that?
That was kind of up in the air.
We need them to say it's your discretion if we give you this drive, because a bus can't get to the end if you don't come down the road. And on these drives, the bus is probably the heaviest thing that comes down that drive.
That's right.
And so, if it's got some pretty big ruts, nine times out of 10, school bus calls.
Well, we have multiple ones, you know, that continually coming in. I mean, I've got some that's got plenty of gravel on them, I promise you.
Yeah. Oh, I think most of the time, a gra... Just a grating is gonna happen.
And so, what we... And in that process, I think what we've talked about, if we work all the school bus turnarounds, then if somebody calls in for a school bus turnaround, they got to go through the channels, which would be the bus bar. They will have to ride out there and evaluate the road and say, it's either safe for our bus, or it's not. And if it's not safe, then they'll do a board order through their board, back through our board, and we'll go out there and work it at that time.
Doesn't seem quite right that we gonna go fix these roads, private roads.
It's a lot of work. We do... We do a lot of work on these roads.
I mean, even I went... I live in the middle of the city, and I had to walk down the end of the street to catch the bus, you know?
What dictates with the school... I know sometimes they'll make the student walk to the end of the road. They won't go down that. I mean, what's...
The state law is 150 feet.
Wow.
From their property. That's the... That's what the statute says.
board, and we'll go out there and work it at that time.
I see it quite right, that we're gonna go fix these roads, prohibit roads.
It's a lot of work. We do, we do a lot of work on these roads.
I mean, even I went, I live in the middle of the city, and I had to walk down the end of the street in case of bus, you know?
What dictates with the school? I know sometimes they'll, they'll make the student walk to the end of the road. They won't go down that.
The state law is 150 feet.
Wow.
From their property. That's the, that's what the statute says. The, obviously, there's some flexibility in there. Nobody's running out there with a measuring tape.
150 from their property to the road?
From the property to where the school bus picks them up and drops them off, 150 feet. And we've got examples all over the county, Bob, where the nearest point of access of the public road could be a quarter mile from the child's property. So, let me...
So we could possibly do a quarter mile work to work?
Yeah. And I want to clarify a couple of things with you as to why we are suggesting that there be some sort of formalized policy. There's a couple of things, Bob. Number one, I really want to make it clear to everyone that our authority under the state law to assist with providing school bus access speaks in terms only of maintaining. We're not authorized to improve, reconstruct, better in any way. It's to simply maintain it in such a way that it's passable. Okay? That's a, that is a fine line of distinction, and Mike and his guys are in the business of making roads good, strong, stable, safe, and compliant. And when it gets to a school bus turnaround, they have to think differently. It's just to simply keep what we've got here and make it passable. Okay? So it's hard on these guys. That's why we want to formalize some stuff. Two, what we are experiencing now is a haphazard approach to requests to work turnarounds. It's haphazard. In other words, there are certain constituencies, I won't delineate any location around the county, but there are some constituencies that apparently have a red phone into the school district where requests for work in school bus turnarounds are immediately responded to. And so it's not unusual for Mike to hear that he's, one of his guys has got to go work something they've worked last month, and he'll be repeating, doing it again next month. In other words, there's some advantages being taken over the, over the discretion that the county has to do this work. By going to a two-month window twice a year where we work the turnarounds, we can, we can better control the number of requests. Where we get stuff that's out of line in terms of the number of requests, we can start indicating we work them September and October, and we work them March and April. And by the way, there's some method to that madness. A little bit drier weather in those months, we would hope, where we're not in there sinking accidentally. That's sort of the approach that we're taking on this. And it's months that Mike's guys have a little more time at their hand to be able to account for some of this, too.
We'll have to write that one down.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's all relative, by the way. He has no time. Of the no time he has, he has a little more then. All right? So there's the policy considerations for you. We also want to have something more formalized where the school district is on record saying that they, they don't have to agree with it. They just have to understand that it is beyond silly to suggest that we're going to go to the end of a 500-foot private drive and make a cul-de-sac look really pretty and leave the rest of it to look like who knows what. That, it's ridiculous to suggest that.
Generally, it's just a difference of if you're going down there, drop the blade, and when you're coming out, keep...
Smooth it up.
Nine times out of 10, we're not doing anything but grading it anyhow.
And the reason we come up with the kind of permission slip, some people may not want us in their driveway. Kind of like I told Shane, you know, explain to these people, we're gonna come in there and promote...
Well, hell, we're not in their driveway. We can't do work on driveways.
It's a private road. Private, I'm gonna reclarify.
I was just gonna make sure you didn't get in trouble there. Hey, why can't the school have a policy that it's a private road that kids go to the end of the road?
They're gonna have to address that state law. I don't know how they address it, Jake. Think about it. If a kid is on a private drive and they're a quarter mile off, I don't know how you get the 150 feet complied with. I don't know how you do it.
Private road or not, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Well, the reason why I ask, because, you know, Pearl Schools, there are some private drives down Eldorado Road, and I see parents on both the private roads picking up their kids, you know, they sitting up there waiting for the school bus to come. So I don't know how they do it, but...
Second school.
Well, they follow the same rules.
Yeah, well, you're right. Different decision-making within the context of the rule. It's all like, that's all I know. Jake, we'd like to...
I just hate the idea somebody taking advantage of us, that's all.
We think this will give us a little bit better control over that, unless, unless the hope.
So you need some kind of action today?
This is informational. This is to let you guys know. I would propose that we, that we get back with the school district and come up with the actual formalized policy and get it back in front of you. My hope is we can get that in front of you on the 15th, if y'all are okay with that approach.
Anything else? Got some urgent orders. Any discussions on the agendas for Monday? Questions?
Jake? Yeah, I got one little change, just some wording, though. At the Pearl School, it was, we already did that work. It was for the erosion by the road, it's track that we needed to...
Don't look at the gentleman?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, you did.
Okay.
They had a 16 section thing on there, and that's why it got called in.
Okay. But that's it.
I have one comment.
We just put that on there to see if you were gonna catch it.
I have one comment, Mike. The gentleman who is going to be speaking in public comments on Monday is here to chew us out about the fact that you have stopped allowing people to put tree limbs in the green containers out there on Marquette Road. So be prepared to address how much we have to unload it because of the yard folks and the maintenance folks that, you know, and you know what we need to do, but he's not a happy camper.
So are we still picking up limbs at people's houses?
We pick up limbs out by the road, Jake.
Yeah.
All they gotta do is call in a work order. We pick them up, we take them to our proper disposal site. With our DEQ stuff, we just, we can't take public, public limbs the way we're set up.
Gotcha.
But I think this gentleman lives actually in the city of Brandon, too, so he could, because he said he was gonna call Butch, and I said, well, you, you call Butch, you know? And I like Butch, too, so...
Well, they quit picking up limbs.
Our containers are for household use.
They still can't, I mean, they can still take those limbs to the same place we take them, can't they?
No.
No.
They can't take them out to, uh...
Oh, yeah, to Mount Ham?
Mount Ham?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they can take them out to Mount Ham.
What your problem is, is those dumpsters, which what we experienced are DEQs.
Right. Well, our dumpsters is for household used garbage, I mean, household garbage. It's not for limbs. And then our...
Vegetation, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, Pearl has a, don't they, they have a vegetation landfill.
Yeah.
I don't think it's just for citizens.
Well, we got, we have one. I mean, we have one set up, but the public can't dump any. And the reason why is because of what caused all this, somebody went back there, we used to let them dump any, Jake, and somebody went back there and threw garbage bags in there, and DEQ happened right by the next day.
Yeah.
You know? So they said, no public, no more public dumping here. You know, y'all not permitted for that. We're just permitted for, it's in the SWIP program, that's about, y'all need to, but uh, okay.
Yeah. They say DEQ, come down on this, huh?
But anyway, in our, in our SWIP deal, it's only for debris that the county hold, brings in. The public can't bring it in. So they had to take it to Mount Ham, and that's where we've been trying to direction everybody to. And even our construction people has been, we've lowered that volume down quite a bit on construction. I mean, if you're tearing down something, but we was getting landscapers coming in there.
Yeah.
Getting people tearing down houses, hauling their stuff in there, you know, contractors that are getting paid for the work is what we was getting. I mean, if you would settle back down to residents, you know, we'd probably be okay.
Just can't figure out who's who. Especially the yard, especially the yard maintenance people. They put up the trailer.
Right.
You know, you don't know whether they're, you know, homeowner or not, so...
They'll pay somebody to come pick up something that ain't got no decals on the truck, get rid of it, you know? And so we're trying to channel everybody to Mount Ham that has that, or to a landfill. I mean, that's the only one I know of.
Well, I don't know if Pearl's is open to the public or not.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
That'd be a dream come true if they were.
Well, I know they have a place where you can go drop them, and they charge you for it, so I would think they'd let...
But see, like, people putting leaves in bags. See, the garbage people only pick up so many bags, it'll pick up. So then if it's in a bag and we go pick it up, then we got to bust the bags before we ever dispose of it, because you can't put the plastic in the vegetation.
Right.
So it's double the work. We try to get everybody just to, if you got leaves, just haul them out there by the street, and we'll get them picked up.
So Bob's first meeting is leading off. You gonna have one of your constituents?
He and I have already gone hand in hand on this conversation about, you know, yeah, so, yeah, but he's...
But I mean, Mr. Bob went down there, and the guy didn't even know him. They dumped down there the other day, so...
Well, on another side, I want to thank you, Mike, for the work you did up there at Pearl Schools. It looks good. They did the foundation for a hidden cage and did some dirt work up there. And he had to pull the crew off today because we were gonna follow up next week and finish it up, you know, tidy it up. Well, they went and ordered all these, like, 50 rolls of sod, and so we, he dropped it and got some folks out there today, so thank you for that.
Yes, no problem. And just to let y'all know, I know y'all see, your work orders is pretty high right now. I mean, we're trying to get roads prepared for contractors coming here. We got contractors starting work. We've issued a bunch of POs for work to be done, starting here any day, and we got to get this road maintenance ahead of them done, because if we delay these contracts, later getting things done, weather's just kind of got us pushed back, but I just want to give y'all a heads up. We're getting them done, they just slowed down a little bit from what we was doing. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else on the agendas?
Or, and Mike Bird was wanting to comment on that.
I was just gonna tell you that the permit on his dumping site for his vegetation is, it is absolutely critical, obviously, that we keep that DEQ permit, and here's why, on my end of it. It is contingent upon the DEQ approval of that dump site for us to get a reimbursement back from FEMA for debris removal in the case of a storm, such as what we had just a couple of weeks ago. We carried several loads over there, and it is compliant as of today with the DEQ permit, which is, that is the hanging contingent point on us receiving funds back for reimbursement when we do debris removal. And really quick on that, Mississippi has not at this point reached the threshold yet. Mike is working on some numbers with us. I don't believe that our numbers are gonna push us over the edge, but anyway, we're gonna get those turned in for them anyway with man-hours and debris and loads and cubic yardage and all that good stuff to see. If it's out there, we're definitely gonna get our hands on it, but just so you know, it is, that, that stamp of approval from DEQ is absolutely contingent from FEMA to give us a money.
But they're gonna come measure files before you're parting and handling it that way.
I'm glad you had one person stand up with your back back there.
I know.
You got a small crowd back over there.
All right, Mr. Slade, item, additional business. I'll go ahead and read it. Authority paid a registration fee in the amount of $275 in reimbursed mileage for Judy Thompson to attend a garden and add light on training on May 4, 2018. This is called School of Law in Jackson. Authority issue registration check.
So moved.
Mr. Cross paid the motion. Say, Mr. Gaines, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. We have need for executive session, Mr. Slade.
Hey, I've got, I've got one thing on additional business, if I can bring that up. I kind of want to mention one thing. I know we've dealt with, the board's aware of the issues in Mill Creek as far as the drainage study that's being performed by Mr. Colson's group that we hired, a third-party group to go in and do it. They started, I guess they were authorized to start this thing before the end of the year last year, and they've been working over on that same side. But I talked to Mr. Hayes, and I'm gonna get Mr. Hayes, if you don't mind, come up to the podium here. I'd like to see you front and center. I feel better with you close to me. But he and I had a conversation last week, and I wanted to bring you all up to aware of it, just so everybody's on the same page of it, but Mr. Hayes called me last week, and he'd spoke to Mr. Schaus, who was their representation or their legal counsel for Mill Creek during that lawsuit side of everything. And Mr. Schaus expressed to Mr. Hayes, and I'm gonna let him kind of get us up to pace on it, that he had a guy that he's worked with or is friends with named Mr. Case.
Bob Case.
Bob Case. And Mr. Case had done some work during the litigation side of everything with Mill Creek as far as going in and evaluating it or whatever it is Mr. Case does. Well, Mr. Schaus, according to Mr. Hayes, had asked Mr. Case to follow up with Mr. Colson on the drainage study and report that was going on. It comes back from Mr. Schaus to Mr. Hayes that Colston's views were that the county was gonna get the report, the drainage study, before the Mill Creek residents got it, or the HOA, or the lawyers had all got it. In other words, we would have a possibility to poison the soup, if you would, on, on, on the drainage study that's being performed. So when Mr. Case, Mr. Hayes told me about that, I immediately called Craig and Trey and that bunch like that to figure out if there was any truth to what Mr. Schaus was telling Mr. Hayes, which is totally false. The county is not requesting to receive any of the drainage study reports before anybody else. We all get it as one group of, of people.
Even if we, somehow the mail was slow and we received it, it's discoverable. I mean, it's about something we...
Right, right. I guess, I guess the point, the point that bothered me the most was, is that Mr. Schaus's group...
The exact thing that we heard...
Right.
Was this, that the report was ready, except there was a discussion to be taken up with Mr. Parker...
Right.
Before they released the report.
Right, and so what's happened, yeah, right, that's what, that's what Mr. Schaus, their attorney, had told Mr. Hayes. And Mr. Hayes is one of the homeowner association officials or directors on, for the subdivision. But what that makes me believe is that if Mr. Schaus has Mr. Case who's in with Colson, and they go back and, and they're discussing the drainage study, and we're not discussing the drainage study. I want the drainage study to be pure. I want the third-party group to go out and do the evaluation to be as pure as possibly, as it possibly can be. So when it all comes back, we know it's all honest and it's a true deal. I don't want the people in Mill Creek to feel like that the county is altering what the drainage study comes back and shows, or reports, whatever it is. I want it to be straight. So the information from Mr. Schaus, that's why I wanted to say here in the meeting today...
The last thing I heard from Mr. Schaus, that he heard from Mr. Jones, Trey Jones, that there was no, nothing to this.
Correct. And that was my follow-up on that conversation.
And that the report, when it comes, will be released simultaneous.
Right. And that was...
And that's satisfactory with us.
Perfect. And that's what I wanted to be sure we got out there and understood, because that's how we understood it, is that we would all get everything together.
I think we're on the same page now.
Right, so Mr. Case and Colson...
Except they're still, ain't got no reports yet.
Well, I can't, I can't control him.
We can't either.
So I just wanted to be sure we had it clear that Mr. Case's relationship with Colston or Schaus, his rumors he's spreading are false, and that we're not getting a report ahead of any of that, so...
I, I think there might have been a misunderstanding or something...
Could be.
With Mr. Case.
Well, hopefully we're good, but if you would, convey back to the homeowners association that the board will get it at the same time.
We've already done that.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, I appreciate it.
I'd also ask that, and maybe this is something that our council can, and just to make sure that you guys are on board here, and it's clarified in your mind, Trey Jones, after Niki, is our legal counsel for the Mill Creek Homeowners Association litigation, and this report is a byproduct of that litigation. So we're discussing a litigation matter, and we'll reflect that. Nothing has gone awry at this stage, but Mr. Jones is our representative. I think what I'll suggest that, that I do later today is to ask Mr. Jones to clarify with Mr. Schaus, who is the legal representative of the HOA, that it would be our position, the county's position, that Mr. Case, who is the expert witness hired by Mr. Schaus to testify in this piece of litigation, he is adverse to the county. I want to make that clear on the record. He is an adverse witness to the county. He is under contract with either Mr. Schaus or the HOA to provide services related to the litigation. I don't know why Mr. Case is calling our neutral third-party hydrologist, Mr. Colson.
That's the way that sounded to me, and the, I was understanding that also.
I want for Mr. Jones to clarify with the other side...
Sure.
That it would be our position that we don't want Mr. Case contacting Mr. Colson anymore.
Right.
That is totally inappropriate.
Sure. And that's the whole goal of everything, is that we get an honest third-party evaluation of Mill Creek, and we're able to proceed after that. That's what we both want.
And if we, if we're in a position, let me be clear, the county is not taking the position that now because Mr. Case is communicating with Mr. Colson that something is wrong with the report. I want to be clear.
Yeah.
We may take that position if it later comes out that there has been a lot more discussion other than, hey, what's the status of the report, which we hope is all that there is. But I want it to be clear, we're not taking the position that something's wrong with the report at this stage, but that is being reserved as our right if later information comes to light.
Yep.
That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Slade.